All right, so I'd like to call the May 12th meeting of the La Habra Heights City Council to order. Quick roll call. Carol?
Here.
Norm?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
And John's here. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we begin tonight with our presentations, I've got a couple of just really brief announcements that I'd like to make. Unfortunately, the community lost a couple of our early leaders this week. Some pretty influential people in this community that were responsible for driving us to become a city, were very instrumental in the early adoption of the city and drove us to where we're at today. So, I know the Chief Martin let me know that last week George Norsworthi passed. George was a long, long time resident of La Habra Heights. He was with family and friends. It sounds like it was an expected issue, so. And then, the second was Julia Higgs. So, Julia passed away, I believe also last week. Julia and her husband were very instrumental in the founding of La Habra Heights and being part of, you know, our community and also part of the council. So, I don't know if anybody has anything they'd like to add or any special moments. I know normally we do these at the end, but I don't know how many of these people are so important to the community and I don't know how many people watch these meetings all the way to the end, so I figured we'd get this done up front.
Yes, something very briefly. Of course, I knew Tom and Julia, they were close neighbors and so forth. The Higgs, Tom and Julia were among the, I would say, six or so people, each of which, if they weren't there doing their job or helping out, the city will not exist. And of course, Gene Good and a number of the others would be in that list also, but each of those made an invaluable contribution to our existence as a city. And thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that I was on the council in '94 and now, and back then, they were, the Higgs, were always at the meetings and they also started and pushed forward the trash pickup to keep hacienda clean and coined the term trashologists. And they were really important people to this community and I'm very sorry to see Julia leave.
And I'd like to add, obviously, I know Norsworthi pretty well and I'm sorry about George also. He'll definitely be missed. Thank you.
And I was just told that Dominic DiMario also has passed away, so, wow, okay. On that note, we will open our agenda, so I'm going to go with just a little out of Catherine, why don't you go ahead and pop up first with your update and then we'll get to the SCE update? Because I know there's some folks that will probably want to get a comment card in for the SCE update.
Okay, well, my condolences to the families and to La Habra Heights for their losses. So, first is basically, good evening Mayor Pespisa, members of the council staff, citizens of La Habra Heights. I'm Catherine Howan. I, along with Roy Francis and Adam Nazaroff, are appointed by the city council to represent La Habra Heights on the Citizen Tactical Authority for the Puente Hills Habitat Authority or C-TAC. I gave the reports to you that you have at your desk and I also gave it to the city manager and I attached also the map that was requested by council member Steffler, and I hope this helps. And could you please add this to the public record as well? There were a number of questions, Mayor, that you had asked, and I'd like to share where the Habitat Authority is with your queries. The first was determining which trees to cut. When a tree falls across an emergency access route or trail, or if it's dead and within the fuel clearance zoned areas posing a hazard, it is removed. If it is dead and/or leaning over an emergency access route or trail, it is removed. The second, working with the La Habra Heights Fire Marshal to review the risk-based approach the Habitat Authority is taking to manage their land. The Habitat Authority is in contact with our Fire Marshal as often as they can. The fuel modification clearance zones were created by the previous La Habra Heights Fire Marshals and reviewed by the previous Fire Chief. The areas that were cleared annually are selected because they have a habitable structure with 100-plus to 200-plus feet of Habitat Authority property boundaries at the wildland urban interface. The Habitat Authority clear all the identified areas every year and complete second clearances at targeted locations. An example would be like Skyline or, Skyline I should say, or Repasal. I said that wrong. Anyways, the Habitat Authority met in February with the La Habra Heights Fire Marshal and shared with the Fire Marshal their clearance activities and previously met with the Fire Chief about a little over a year ago and shared their approaches with him and the previous mayor. And number three, how the Habitat Authority is going to develop a risk-based approach for managing the land, especially as it pertains to brush clearance. On Friday, I sent you an email dated February the 6th, 25th, that was sent to the mayor and I had issues with my internet and found that some of you hadn't received it, so I'll get it sent out to you. The Habitat Authority does everything they can in providing responsible public services and maintaining public open space. And here are the activities the Habitat Authority does or are on their radar, and some of these items also fall on the shoulders of La Habra Heights. Planning for wildlife is multifaceted, involving many agencies and efforts, and these include ignition prevention, fuel management, modeling, evacuation plans and conditions, water infrastructure, development routes and codes, home hardening, financial support. The Habitat Authority has increased their preparedness for wildfires over the past few years, in part by conducting more fuel management than ever before in the preserve thanks to outside funding. And when I state fuel management, it not only includes brush clearance, replacement of the non-native vegetation with native vegetation creates a fire retardant because the native plants are more reluctant to burn. The Habitat Authority is actively exploring grants to pay for a risk-based modeling and updated vegetation mapping efforts. These efforts, together with a hazard mitigation plan process, the Habitat Authority is hoping to add to the current robust defensible space clearance efforts that are inspected annually by the Fire Marshal. And the Fire Marshal has the maps of all the areas that the Habitat Authority currently clears annually. And by the way, this is concerning the city maintain La Habra Heights roads that need clearance along the sides, that could be like 10 to 20 feet out, and I know we do have a lot of them actually. Contact River and Rivers and Mountains Conservancy and ask for help. That's the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, and ask them for help, and don't be shy because I'm sure that they would like to, they would help you and aid you in clearing these areas. Also, if a dumping in the city on the habitat property is a concern, the most efficient way to handle this is for people can email info@habitatauthority.org and provide the location and details. So, for more information about the Habitat Authority, please contact myself, Roy, or Adam, or go to the website www.habitatauthority.org. Any questions? Did I help a little bit on your questions?
Yes, thank you. They was very, very helpful and I've been working with the Fire Marshal on ensuring that the items that Habitat says they're doing, they're actively doing.
Yeah, they're willing to learn and work with La Habra Heights.
No, that sounds like it. Thank you, Kathy, for doing that lift for us.
And if there's anything more you need me to do, you have my cellphone number.
I have a quick question. We're obviously looking at mapping vegetation issues, so to the extent that we may overlap each other and we may be doing things, since you're now indicating there's going to be some vegetation mapping, I strongly suggest that whoever the representatives are at the Habitat, deal with Rafferty on that. We're right in the process of deciding who the vendor's going to be and what type, what density of mapping there should happen, should happen. So, I think that's really good. And SCE is here today, so we can share with them that there appear to be some distribution line wires for the Telephonic Tower at Crown Castle that need to be looked at. Thank you for reporting that, Kathy.
I didn't quite understand what you said when you said that you could go 20 feet back and they would help, they would help you.
They'll have to go in 20 feet plus, I mean, from the road, whatever needs to be cleared.
But, yeah.
I know they've done that in other places and they're very open to helping.
We can look into it, but I think most of the road clearance is a responsibility actually of the residents in most, in most areas of La Habra Heights.
But if you have areas that are La Habra Heights, I mean, you could ask them if they could help you out somehow. Doesn't hurt to ask.
I see Chief Jorgensen scratching down notes.
Just a thought, because I was saying, you know, what do you guys do? And a few people were saying this is where, you know, because I've asked around, not just the Habitat Authority, but I've asked around to other places and they say that's where they've gone to get help. So, thought I'd throw that to you.
Thank you.
That idea to you as well. And for vector control, it varies, it's not a long, you want me to say, talk about vector control now?
Yep.
Now, we know mosquito season's upon us, so there's going to be abundance of mosquitoes, but we're at normal levels right now. And if you're having a problem where you're, you think your backyard is clear, but you're still getting bitten like crazy, call Habitat Authority and they'll send out technicians, they'd be happy to find out the sources, because, you know, we're trying to, you know, keep the mosquitoes as low as possible. For their programs, you know, for schools, they used to go from kindergarten to grade five, now they're expanding the program to include high school. And there'll be class activities, so they have pre and post tests, so they learn about it. And they'll be using their mosquito SWAT lab as well. The SIT, or the sterile insect technique, is still going on, and they're releasing about 30,000 sterile male mosquitoes in localized areas in the Sunland to Hunga area daily. And they've been, they've been seeing a major drop in these biting mosquitoes, I'd say around 60 to 80% reduction. And at this time, the SIT lab is being expanded to accommodate new geographies, and funding will be the limiting factor in the expansion of this effort. And I believe the next council meeting, they're wanting to come in and do a presentation for the city council. So, that's it for them.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you for keeping track.
Thank you.
So, what's their, just real quick, what's their prediction for this year? I know we had some interesting weather patterns the last few weeks, so are they saying that's going to add to the mosquito issue in the city or?
If you have rain and then hot and then rain, it kind of, you get more. It's like, because mosquitoes love water and they kind of hang around wherever the water is, so the more water sources that you have, the more mosquitoes you have. For example, in the fire burn areas, the Greater Alley Vector Control helped out the San Gabriel Vector Control, because they had all those swimming pools filled with water and they had, like, we're talking millions upon millions of mosquitoes coming out of there. And so, you know, they were basically putting in mosquito fish and such, and that's something that people could do here, is ask for mosquito fish if they have ponds. That could help too. But, yeah, they haven't really predicted exactly. They think it's going to be sort of a normal year this year. We'll still see them, but.
Okay, and then last time you were here, you were talking about cases of West Nile. Any updates on that? I know people with horses are usually very interested in the West Nile update.
We haven't had any human cases in the last month for the West Nile. And I know with West Nile, the concern is some, you know, people may be carriers and not have it, but we haven't had any breakdown, human, what do you call it, cases come up.
Okay, thank you.
So, so far, we're lucky.
All right. Okay, thank you, Kathy. Next, we have Southern California Edison. We asked Edison to come today to give a presentation on what they're doing on the wildfire front, but also, we had some questions for residents after the fires, being that we have a major Edison right-of-way that runs along the northern border of the city to kind of address what's there and what, if any, threats that poses, so I want to thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to also express my condolences for the loss to the city, or the losses, I should say. And thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself to you and talk a little bit about PSPS and other topics relevant to the city. As I mentioned, I'm Rebecca Lansing. I've been with Edison for 15 years and four of those have been with local public affairs. I transitioned into this role in February, taking over for Adrian Garcia, and I'd like to go over the role of SCE's Government Relations Managers. We are the liaisons between SCE and local government. We are a resource to local elected officials and staff. Some things GRMs can assist with are answering energy-related and operations questions, escalated community issues, and important SCE updates. Customer service would be able to provide outage and customer-related inquiries. And SCE also has an assigned account manager who can manage the city as a customer issues, such as billing, establishing new service, or enrolling city accounts and programs. Next slide. Here's what's on the agenda for tonight. I've given an introduction and I'll go over some city statistics. I also have Susan Morgan with me from the SCE permitting team and Josh Torres, Principal Manager of Local Public Affairs and also my manager, here with me tonight. Susan will talk about current projects and we'll talk about wildfire risk mitigation and a PSPS overview. Susan and Josh, would you like to do a quick intro?
Hi there, Mayor Members of the City Council. My name is Joshua Torres. I'm the Principal Manager of Government Relations for Southern Los Angeles County.
I'm Susan Morgan. I'm the Agency Advisor for the Permitting Department and I cover all of Orange County and work on permit issues and any contractor issues that the agencies have.
Thank you so much. Next slide, please. So, here's some information about SCE's grid. We service over 50,000 square miles in Southern California. 14,000 of them are high-fire risk areas, which make up 27% of the service territory. SCE has 1.4 million poles and towers and 311,000 of them are in high-fire risk areas. Next slide, please. City of La Habra Heights is comprised of about 1,800 residential, 200 care, and 117 business customers. We pay franchise fees to municipalities for the right to operate within their jurisdictions. And in 2024, SCE paid approximately $83,000 in franchise fees to the city of La Habra Heights. The city has a total of 394 customers utilizing solar and battery systems, and in 2024, SCE paid Los Angeles County 170 million in property tax. Now, I'll turn it over to Susan to talk about projects. Next slide, please.
Most recently, we've probably noticed some of you have had some people from outside companies and basically from Valenco and Quests, and what they're doing is they're doing some surveys right now and they've been talking to some of the residents and things, getting permission to go to survey their properties. Part of that is for a project that's coming up in the next couple of years, hasn't been drawn yet, first they have to do that, but it'll be undergrounding some of the wires and some of the, taking down some of the poles. Other locations will be adding covered conductor, which actually hardens the grid for wire and makes it safer for any wires, any fires that we, that would come up. We're also, again, so they're doing all that, those things as well, as our line clearing people are out there right now doing some midterm inspections right now. They do that twice a year. Generally, they do their main trimming during the third quarter of the year, but they're also doing re-debatment on the Edison right-of-ways right now. And so, they're trying to just make sure everything looks good and even outside of trim cycles, they're willing to, you know, they go out and check things out. And if you see something that looks like it's out of compliance, basically, if it's getting close to the Edison lines, and keep in mind, our lines are the ones at the top, the ones that, the lower lines are communication, the Edison lines are on the top. If they're, if they're getting up into those, that you please let us know and we'll send someone to take a look. Even if you're not sure, they'll always go out and look and check for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Perfect, next slide. A quick note here on transmission and distribution lines. Transmission lines are larger and higher off the ground than distribution lines, which reduces the likelihood of objects coming into contact and causing an ignition. Much of the monitoring, safety, and protection equipment, SCE, has been working to install in the distribution system, has been installed on transmission lines for decades. Transmission lines are designed to de-energize within a fraction of a second after a fault is detected. Additionally, SCE regularly conducts inspections of all power lines. Next slide, please. That's a little hard to see, but this is a great infographic, if you have a printout, that shows all the ways SCE is reducing wildfire risk. So, we've got grid hardening system and advanced technologies like covered conductor, which Susan mentioned, fire-resistant poles and crossarms, and fast-acting fuses. There's also undergrounding work going on, hazard tree and vegetation management programs, customer resources and support, like critical care backup battery program, and more. Next slide, please. Why do we do PSPS? While we've de-energized customers for safety in the past, SCE officially began using PSPS in 2018 to prevent wildfire ignitions during periods of high winds accompanied by dry vegetation and low humidity. It's one of many strategies that are part of a wildfire mitigation plan, which is approved by state legislators, regulators, excuse me. The PSPS program was authorized by the CPUC in 2012. And while disruptive and often frustrating for customers, PSPS helps protect our communities by reducing the risk of catastrophic wildfire. During the January PSPS events, we identified... We identified over 70 instances of damage in areas in which we had de-energized for PSPS. Had the lines remained energized, in some cases, the damage could have ignited a fire. And beyond these 70 incidents, the de-energized wires prevented faults that could have also caused fires. This slide shows the increase in acres burned in California over the past 40 years, which definitely supports the need for continuing PSPS. As you can see, it's gone from just under 2 million to 8 million in 2024. That's a 75% increase. Next slide, please. Forecasting. We consider PSPS when strong winds, very dry vegetation, and low humidity are forecast. Under these conditions, a fire could spread rapidly. PSPS reduces the risk that winds could cause flying debris to hit our lines or damage our equipment and cause a fire. Our meteorologists review weather conditions daily, using both internal and external weather models, and they track periods of high winds and low humidity. That's what you see on the left side there. And our fire scientists calculate the dryness of local plants and grass using both modeling and bi-weekly sampling across our service area. We consider PSPS when there is a risk of our equipment being the source of an ignition. SCE uses 1,700 pole-top weather stations for real-time monitoring on or adjacent to the circuits in scope for the event. And SCE crews patrol circuits before and during PSPS events to provide additional information regarding actual weather conditions. Next slide, please. Here's a look at one of our weather stations, mentioning that wind speed readings are taken every 10 minutes, and field crews will assess conditions while patrolling, looking for damage and other hazards that could increase the risk of fire. Next slide, please. This slide shows the decision-making criteria used for PSPS consideration. You can see the Fire Potential Index, or FPI, measuring vegetation dryness. The current threshold is 12 or 13 for that. Then there's the wind speed threshold, which varies depending on bare wire or covered conductor circuits. And SCE also establishes switching plans, wherein, whenever possible, individual segments of a circuit are switched to neighboring circuits so that some customers can remain energized. Next slide, please. Starting three days in advance of a potential PSPS event, SCE issues notifications to public safety partners, local, county, and state government officials, emergency management agencies, fire authorities, and critical infrastructure customers to assist in their planning and preparation for the potential PSPS. Starting two days in advance of the event, we notify customers. But sudden weather changes may prevent advance notice. We also might see changes in the weather that allow us to cancel the event. Not all customers who are alerted will have their power shut off. Next slide, please. More on PSPS communications here. SCE provides PSPS notifications to account holders via email, text, and voice call. These are address-level alerts, so it's important that customers ensure that their contact information is current in the Customer Preference Center on SCE.com. There's also the SCE Outage Map, which is SCE.com/OutageMap. You can type an address in the search bar to search for any type of outage impacting that address. Next slide, please. After a PSPS incident, every de-energized line must be physically inspected to make sure it's safe and free of hazards. Restoration times are typically up to eight hours once a circuit is cleared for inspection. There could be delays if the conditions are dangerous or if damage is found. Remote circuits, where we might need helicopter or foot patrols, can only be safely inspected in daylight, which may lead to additional delays. Next slide, please. What is the best way to partner for PSPS preparedness? Well, there are at least four ways we can discuss. Number one, be aware of the customer support programs available. Two, improve your personal and commercial resiliency and emergency preparedness. Three, update your own and loved ones' contact information. And four, stay informed by visiting SCE.com/SPS during events, attending a community meeting, and perusing our annual PSPS newsletter coming soon. There are some additional preparedness tips. I won't go over everything on this slide, but some good ones are to store flashlights where you can easily find them, have extra batteries for all battery-powered equipment, store at least a gallon of bottled water per person per day, learn to manually open automatic garage doors and gates, that's a good one, that hit home for me, familiarize yourself with your home's utility boxes and how to turn them off, and create a family safety preparedness plan. And create a family safety preparedness plan. Next slide. And lastly, here are some additional information and resources. You can see they're categorized by type. So there are SCE notification resources, situational awareness resources, preparedness and vegetation management information, targeted undergrounding, customer programs, community meetings, and another good resource is Energized by Edison. This concludes our presentation tonight. I'd like to thank the council again for allowing us to present, and we can open for questions. Does anyone have a question?
Do you know if there are any proposed undergroundings in the Heights, in the Hopper Heights?
I do have that information, but the team that pulls it was not able to pull it before this meeting, so I...
Anyone in the audience have any questions they'd like to ask? Just raise your hand and stand up. I think we can hear you. Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you. Across the top of the city, from west to east, there's two sets of lines and towers. And then it go, Tierra, a third one comes in. I was wondering if those are all live? And if so, if they're not used, some of them, how long has that been? And if they've long been unused, should they be removed? And then what are the pros and cons of dry brush removal at the base of towers, extending out some distance from them so any falling sparks or arcing won't ignite? Because that seems, just from my amateur observation of news, that most of the electric fires are started at the towers, wires swinging in and touching them or something. And then you mentioned about the surveying of the roads. If you see a road that's been surveyed, should we presume that those lines are going to be undergrounded, like in the Hackberry Circuit? And if you're undergrounding them, are you working with the communication company so they do it simultaneously, concurrently, or sequentially? So everything can be done at one time?
So the two transmission lines that run north of the city are active and utilized. So Susan mentioned that they're doing surveying to assess the feasibility of undergrounding certain circuits. So at this time, we can't guarantee that those lines will be undergrounded, but we are exploring that. So we use a risk-based model to prioritize where we underground. Basically, you know, where can we get the most bang for our buck, right? How can we reduce risk and improve customer safety using finite resources? When we move lines underground, we do communicate to our joint pole partners, which are often telecommunication companies, well in advance to give them the opportunity, if they want to go underground with us. However, we cannot compel them to do so. So that's, that's their decision. We don't have any authority to force them to go underground with us. And then you had a second question in the mid, I wasn't able to capture. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we do vegetation management regularly. Susan informed me that they're actively doing that right now. And you can always call our call center if you see vegetation that is concerning, and we can send somebody out to take a look.
I think the other, the other thing too that Susan mentioned was that the surveyors could be used both for undergrounding but also for covered conductor. So maybe just a quick, just a quick two minutes on what, what is covered conductor for folks, so they understand what it is?
Covered conductor is just change, it's a different type of wire that's out there. So it's fire-resistant wire. And it's basically, the wire is covered over so that if the lines do fall, they're not going to start a fire. There's no, nothing to energize them. And so that's in case, because there's a lot of locations, because you notice the terrain here isn't, isn't really conducive to undergrounding everything. And so it's what we use in many locations. And some of your lines have already been, have covered conductor on them. I know on the Whipstock, we had gone through and changed a lot of those poles a few years back. And then we went back a couple of years ago and, and replaced the wire with covered conductor.
Thank you, Susan. Any other questions for the, Stephen, as a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up on maybe technicality. You mentioned about two sets of lines are live, but there's three. Are they all three live?
So sorry, it's been a while since I've worked on transmission projects in the area, but to my knowledge, everything is live here. And even if they weren't, we're going to keep the right-of-way. Because of the clean energy transition, we can't release right-of-way. It's incredibly difficult to acquire new easements. And we need massive amounts of transmission to comply with the state's goals. So any transmission corridors that we have are going to stay in perpetuity. But it's the line that I'm thinking of, that you're referencing. It's a 220 KV line that splits off and goes south into Orange County, which is active. I'd have to look at a map to see what you're referring to.
So maybe if you would just, Susan, just forward a copy of, I don't think it's, I don't think it's protected, but maybe a copy of the map and just, we can give it to folks to look at so they know what's there. Yeah, I can't remember if that's protected or not, but, okay. Anything else? Rebecca, Susan, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's move into public comment. The first card I have is from Ray.
That doesn't work. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Pespisa, council members and staff. My name is Ray Fernandez. I live on Sharpless Drive. Been living in this fine city over 20 years. I just have some random thoughts, and then I want to speak to item 20, about hiring a principal planner. I just want to compliment you, which you guys aren't very used to hearing people up here compliment you, but I've seen some very nice improvements lately. The traffic light is finally going up in Avocata Crest. Looks like they're moving along quickly. Hopefully, they'll energize it and we'll have it running before, I think it was August, right? But it looks like they're going faster. Some of the guardrails have been fixed and replaced. That's nice. The striping on Hacienda looks good. And I was very pleased to see that the city lot on West and Hacienda, the weed clearance has been done. And I think that's great, because I've always been a big believer in leading by example. Excuse me. And if you want citizens to clean their properties, it's a good thing that you're clearing the city property. Also, I want to thank Chief Ryan Jorgensen, because for the first time since I've lived on Sharpless Drive, as maybe you've heard me say before, I'm surrounded. I'm in the middle of 13 acres, and the immediate five acres around me had never really been cleared. And it's finally getting done. I'm just thrilled about it. I'm not thrilled that they cut down all the mature pepper trees, and now we have just a wasteland, but that's a whole nother story. I have a small ask. Now that the guardrail is done on East Road, that 90-degree turn by the golf course, maybe the, those barricades can be removed also. Where the two hillside collapses, the one on East Road, west of the golf course, they put a new curb, and they left the old sandbags that looks unsightly. Also, on Fullerton Road, between East Road and Harbor, you can see the old sandbags there, just deteriorating. So maybe somebody can pick that up. But I mostly want to really talk about item number 20. This is regarding hiring a principal planner for the salary of $50,000. Now, I noticed that we haven't had a principal planner for two years.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
But this is just a, an interim, what's, item 20 is just an interim solution to hire a consultant while we're hiring the principal planner.
Oh, so it said a contract service. I didn't know, I mean, this report is kind of light on facts. It doesn't say if it's part-time, full-time. So it's not the person that would take in plans?
No, it's just a...
Okay, well then...
It's just a, a stopgap while we're trying to hire the principal planner to move, to keep things moving through the process.
Okay, well then, my comments would not be apropos to this discussion, because I thought you were hiring a planner for $50,000, which if that was a full-time job, that's $24.03 an hour.
No, we're just...
I pay my gardener more than that. Kidding about, okay, so, so that's just a contract planner? Does it think about hiring a planner?
No, no, no. To actually do the work, the planning work that's backing up, we want to try to get rid of the backlog.
Okay.
And also clean up some of the stuff that's in rear. So I'm going to get chastised here, but...
Oh, no, no, that's fine. I mean, we're supposed to talk about it later, but whatever. Basically, we're hiring a company to charge us by the hour to do the work. So that's why it's at that rate. And that's why we're only paying that much.
Okay, well then, just one comment, because I, I thought it was an actual person that's going to be behind the counter. But, you know, we hear a lot about in this city that this city can't pay very good wages, because, you know, we're a little city, we don't have commercial, just property taxes. But I want to tell you that maybe you can hire a full-time person to work behind the counter, because we haven't had one for two years and five months. And I just submitted plans about five weeks ago for just a workshop. I'm retired now, and I want to do woodworking. And just a four-wall building, 837 square feet. The fee, just to submit the plan to Planning Department, only $670. Took about 15 minutes to put the application in, and I doubt anybody spent more than an hour or two looking on my plan. So that's well over $200 an hour. I'm going to have to apply for a standard modification, which could be $3,200 to $3,600. And so I'm at $4,000 just to get it through planning to build a workshop. So you may consider, next time you want to raise fees, maybe the reason people don't get permits, because the fee's exorbitant, and it takes forever to get a permit. And I want to quote from the city's website. When you go in the Building Department, it says, "Allow five to 10 days for processing and approval." That really is a joke. I mean, I'm at five weeks, and I haven't even made it through Planning Department for a little simple workshop. So I would urge the council to consider this situation, because it's an urgent pressing matter that you've got to figure out a way how to expedite the permitting process in the city. Because to me, it's broken. And that's why I'm on the Planning Commission, seeing if in some small way, you know, I can help. But sometimes I just want to run my head into a brick wall, but of course, I won't do that. But anyway, thank you for what you're doing. I know it's hard. You probably get emails at all times of the day and night. So I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Shouldn't we respond that, aren't the permit fees designed to cover the cost? We're not making money on permits.
That's correct. As, as a matter of law, we can't make money, but we are allowed to recover the cost of the time spent. And it's based upon fee studies by consultants of how long permit applications usually take to review. So it's the, it's the philosophical debate of whether you have the general public pay for someone's permit application or else, or as compared to the person submitting the application, whether they pay the cost for the application. And that's, that's what we do.
All right, any other public comments? Stephen?
Thank you, Stephen Black in Citron Road. Some came to me while I was listening. I say this each time we get a new planner with their employee to contract. Most mistakes, we'll call them, happen when people are coming or going. So on, let's say, major remodels and new houses, it could be helpful, useful for some oversight when the major remodel or new home plans, if they're approved by the consultant as an administrative approval, that they go to the Planning Commission, maybe on the consent calendar, so we can just take a look at them and just make sure that everything is okay. Then fees, yeah, it would be good to have reduced fees. Some of them seem quite high. I'm all in favor of the fees covering costs, but you don't want to institutionalize things that are done inefficiently. So we should be looking to use technology to speed things up, like the system the city got in 2007 for permitting. One of the features of it was you'd be able to do online permitting with it. Well, 18 years later, we still don't have online permitting. And so to me, you know, you, you pay 40, 50, or 60 dollars for the permit issuance fee. But if you had online permitting, that cost should be going down towards zero. Another fee that I mention periodically, I can't figure out, is the abatement lien fee of $1,500. They come to you, all the math has already been done. You know the amount that's going to be leaned. The county, I don't think even charges for putting the lien. So $1,500 to fill out a lien form and whatever paperwork has to be done, to me seems excessive. I don't know if that'll be part of the fee review that's ongoing. We'll see how that actually comes to $1,500. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Any, I don't think we have any committee members here. Catherine, you gave your updates, so I think we're good. Any city council comments?
I just had a question probably for Todd. When we're talking about the undergrounding, is there anything the city could do if Edison decided to underground its lines to force the cable companies to put their lines under at the same time? Or is that FCC, and we don't have authority? Or you want to get back to me on that, or?
I don't believe there's any authority, because in a number of situations where I've dealt with this before, and Edison has agreed to underground, they were required to leave poles up for the, you know, cable companies, phone companies, people of that nature. So unless there's something specific in the easement that says that upon undergrounding, they also have to, or they terminate their easement, I don't believe there's any mechanism to do so. Now, we could, you could, cities have the ability to set up undergrounding districts, which is a financing mechanism by which people that receive service from whatever utility it is, pay into a fund, and then that fund is used to underground whatever facilities are at issue. So you can do that, but that is incredibly expensive, and the funds come from the property owners who have to vote upon it. So it's usually not used that frequently, other than like along scenic corridors and stuff of that nature.
Thank you.
I have a brief comment. I had forgotten to mention that when you mentioned the other two, Julie Higgs and George Norsworthi. About a month ago or so, Judy Morgan, Judy Morgan died. And Judy Morgan, as many may know, is a longtime treasurer of the Island Riders. Was heavily involved in Fire Watch also, among other things. He was a board member and also treasurer for a time. So, and she was, she basically grew up in the Hopper Heights also. I decided to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Any others? All right, let's start with the administrative reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are a number of upcoming events in La Habra Heights that we wanted to mention. First, there's a free workshop on living with coyotes. It is coyote season also in La Habra Heights. This will be presented at City Hall on May 22 at 6:30 PM by a guest speaker from the LA County Agricultural Commission. And it's an opportunity to learn about coyote biology, safety tips, and laws. We also have a makeup litter pickup on Hacienda Road, and that will be on May 24th. Meet at City Hall at 6:45 AM. A quarterly cleanup will be held June 21st and October 18th from 8:00 AM to noon at the park. Volky items, green waste, and electronics will be accepted. No hazardous waste at these events. The regular Hacienda litter pickup will be held on June 21st, again, meet at City Hall at 6:45. And just two more. The Music in the Park series starts June 18th, featuring The Answer, which I understand has been playing in the community for some 30 years and is always well-received. And the LA County Household Hazardous Waste Roundup will be held July 12th at 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the park. And we'll make sure that these and other events are on the city's website.
Yeah, and I think the Hacienda cleanup that was scheduled for, was it two weekends ago? That where we had the rain has been rescheduled for May 24th. So May 24th will be the spring road cleanup. So John Dominguez is leading that, and if you want to participate, we're meeting at City Hall on the 24th at 6:45. And I think there's an email. Put the email address, but if you're interested, be at City Hall at 6:45 on the 24th. That's a Saturday.
City Attorney, any reports?
No.
What have you done lately?
What have I done lately? Don't start with me.
I'm a short timer.
All right. Don't make me, don't make me bang the-
I actually got gavelled to be quiet at my Yorba Linda meeting last week by the mayor, so, that was a new one for me. So I don't want to tick you off. Yeah, right, yeah.
Community Development Report?
This report will be presented at your next meeting.
Fire Chief's Report?
Good afternoon, good evening. Fire Chief's Report for April. We had a busier month in April. We're up 65 calls this month, up from like 55 is our average. We have new, you, you have asked us to provide more information on the, on the La Habra Heights island based on some of the things that were, that are being planned for that area. We had two calls in that area this month. I have, we've, we've been aggressively working on brush mitigation after the fires in Altadena and in the Palisades. I've brought Chief Jorgensen here to discuss something that might expedite things a little bit faster. Would you like to talk about the, would you like to talk about the drone?
So, good evening, Mayor, esteemed council members and staff. As of May 1st, we've officially commenced our annual brush inspection, weed abatement, and vegetation management program. In light of the recent tragic fires in Los Angeles County, most notably the Palisades as well as the Eden fires, I've been actively exploring new technology that will level up our brush inspection program. Through the use of physical AI or artificial intelligence, while using a drone as the conduit, we will be able to thoroughly complete all parcel inspections in record time. This technology is currently being utilized in Los Angeles County by a variety of fire departments, including Los Angeles County Fire, Los Angeles City Fire, San Bernardino County and as well as Riverside County Fire Departments. Understandably, one of the primary concerns brought forth by residents is their privacy. To address this concern, please know that the drone and the AI software are fully compliant with California privacy and curtilage laws. Their AI is specifically designed to filter out any images of people, ensuring resident privacy is strictly protected. By using physical AI software via a drone, La Habra Heights has the distinct opportunity to lead the way in wildfire risk management, using the most advanced privacy-respecting technology available. It is always in our best interest to keep the community of La Habra Heights as safe as possible. I'm opening to any questions at this time.
So I'll, I'll just add on to what Chief Jorgensen mentioned. I, I was fortunate enough to be able to sit down with the the company that is developing this technology, and it truly is cutting-edge technology. We're fortunate that they picked us to, or asked us to be a partner in this. So this is some R&amp;D work on their side, but it's, it's really incredible where they're heading to. The ability to determine density, fuel densities, fuel moisture content, species, identify species so that they can further determine fire risk. The ability to quickly identify properties that present fire risk, clusters of properties that present fire risk is, is really game-changing, I think, for our fire department to be able to quickly identify the highest risks in the city and go out and mitigate those. I, you know, it, it, I think it's an absolute game-changer for us in the area of brush clearance. I, I also think it's a game-changer for us in keeping our city safe. So they're, they're going to be out some more over the next, the next couple of months, working on tuning the capability that they have, and we'll be, we'll be the recipients of that information as they go forward. So I think a lot of it is being done as part of their R&amp;D effort. I haven't, I haven't heard a dollar amount, but it sounds like most of this is part of being a partner and, and working with them on tuning their software and their, their capability. I'm, I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, beta testing's a really great value, and the advantage to La Habra Heights is we have such wonderful depth of experience in wildfires. We get it, we understand it, we're engaged in it. They're lucky that we're willing to do it. And in that regard, I'd just like to thank the fire department for the wonderful work they did in doing wildfire training in other agencies. We're a little department and we don't have a lot of resources, but we sure have a lot of talent. And we displayed it incredibly well in April, so I'm very proud of that. Thank you so much.
So we, we don't have any dates for the next drone deployment, but if I remember correctly, Chief, we're going to be working mostly on the northern end of town on the Wildland Interface with the Habitat. That's where they're gonna, I think, try to do some of their tuning next?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I have a couple of, I guess, my first question is, is it costing the city anything at this point? My second question is, these are drones? Okay, and are they going over residences at this point or strictly over the wildlife? And then I guess the other question is, well, what's the answer to those questions? I'm big on privacy, so.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Answer to your question is, right now, no upfront cost. No upfront expenditure to the fire department or the city whatsoever. In terms of the inspection piece, yes, it is going to be flying over residences. However, the software is designed so it will, it blurs out any person, cannot see through windows, and it's strictly looking at vegetation only.
How can it not see through windows?
They've designed the software that way.
Okay, and then, let's say they see something, can, does the city have the authority just to go in the backyard? Because it's fire hazard, or did they need a warrant, or?
That is going to be part of the fire code enforcement piece, and I can address that at a later time. But airspace is objectionable. Airspace is not restricted. As long as a drone flies below 300 feet, it's, airspace is free.
Below 300 feet?
Correct. This drone is not designed, it's restricted to not fly above 295 feet.
Well, I know many years ago, there were restrictions on how low a plane could go that was trying to find marijuana. They had to stay at a certain height, so this has to be under a height, but there's no required distance from the ground, I guess, other, as long as it's under the 300 feet?
That's correct.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, yeah, so governmental inspection flights, there are certain rules that the FAA allows, and my understanding is that, that is correct, as that. As to your other point about a warrant, in administrative health and safety, well, you may know this as well as I do. An administrative health and safety type of inspections, a warrant isn't required constitutionally. Now, if we're going in to arrest somebody, yeah, then you, then you are. But when it's a health and safety issue for inspection purposes and a potential remediation, a warrant is not required.
Thank you.
Any other council questions on this? Yeah, I think one thing to keep in mind, they're actually coming to us to partner with us. They could do this without, they don't need our permission to do it. They could, they could park their car on a private street and launch the drone and fly it, just like any other citizen could do.
There, there are limitations upon, if I may, Mayor, upon private citizens and privacy impacts, which are different than this situation. So a private citizen actually couldn't, I don't believe, do this. They may do it, but not legally. Every time I see a drone, I want to shoot it, but I think that's a crime.
That, that is definitely a crime, but yeah, I think flying a drone in public space is legal as long as you adhere to the FAA requirements.
You have to adhere to the FAA requirements, and you can't impact certain privacy concerns, which I can't remember off the top of my head, but like you can't go in somebody's yard and be able to look in a window.
Oh, right, right.
That you can't do, yeah.
All right, so I do have an out-of-sequence public comment on this. Do we want to wait until we get to public comments at the end, or should we take it now? Stephen?
Is he limited to five total minutes?
Well, thank you, Stephen Black in Citron Road.
Since he's one of three of our citizens that are gracing us with their presence at our council meeting.
I, I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda till I heard about it. You know, using a drone, you could do inspections of every parcel of the city without leaving City Hall. About 14, 15 years ago, a council member had an idea of using a helicopter to do code enforcement inspections or weed abatement inspections for troublesome properties. And that didn't happen, of course, because, for one, it was too expensive. And at that time, we had a call for an ordinance for no drones. People generally, and I think people here, are concerned about their privacy. There was an incident where the fire department came around to do an inspection of someone, and they used a Knox box to open up the person's gate to go in and do the inspection, which I think is a big no-no. The resident happened to be out in her yard and saw them and caught them, and they were very apologetic and came before the city council and said it wouldn't happen again. But that's an example of people value their privacy. They wouldn't have gates and tall hedges if they wanted people flying over looking in. So it might be worth doing some kind of poll or survey of residents to see what they think. There could be a rash of drones that might come out of the sky in various ways. Thank you.
So, again, I, I've seen the, the technology, and it's not the typical imagery that you would think. So it's not like high-def video. Literally what it is, it's a bunch of colored blobs that are indicative of the fuel type that's there.
Well, that's helpful to hear that.
So it's not, it's not, if you look at it, it looks like, like a, a heat map showing, you know, pixelated blobs of fuel. And it's very difficult to even make out the homes. The type of sensors they're using are really there to determine moisture content, identify species, identify things like residual heat. So it's, it's, it's pretty benign. We are going, just so everyone knows, we are going to agendize this. It'll be on the June agenda, and we'll actually have the company here, and we'll show, they'll show what this looks like. But again, I, I, I understand. I had a drone flying over my property the other day, and like Todd was trying to remind myself of what the, what the penalty might be if I took, took action. So I, I get it. I, I too am concerned. However, I also know that Edison and a lot of the utilities now are flying drones exactly for this reason because, especially in the Heights, there's a lot of places you just cannot, you cannot easily get to to inspect. And I, I really look at this as a force multiplier for our fire department. You know, we, we talk about the expense of running the city. There, there's a real possibility that this could significantly reduce our cost of doing our brush clearance each year and, and really allow us to focus on the true risks that are, that are presented because that's one of the things this company does, is it really helps us understand the risk. And, and it does it in a way that is not intuitive. So it can look at, one of the questions we had is, can it do clustering? So where you have 10 properties that each by themselves doesn't look horrible, but when you take the 10 together and you look at the impact that a fire starting on one of those properties could have to the adjoining properties, and because the adjoining properties have issues, it identifies that cluster risk that it's really hard for someone just on the ground seeing that.
Well, the beauty of this is that it gives you enough empirical data that you can prioritize your work. I mean, that's the kind of casual, if we send people out there to look at it, they're not going to get anywhere close to the kind of data we'll get from the drone. And there's, and, and, you know, people, I find this whole discussion of privacy odd to me. But in any event, I think it's the right thing. This, the city, in, in order to somehow overcome our revenue, lack of revenue, we have to find a way to do things better, smarter, and more modernized. And we've got to give our staff those kind of tools that are necessary to allow them to move forward. So this prioritization is incredibly important. I'm glad we have them come in June, and I hope everybody understands that. And some people are upset. We just got a letter about trash collection, so, you know, whatever.
I, like I said, I, I asked, I asked Chief Jorgensen to add it to the report today so we can begin introducing it. I, I do want to make sure that the company does come out and answer questions, show, I mean, a picture's worth a thousand words when you see what it can do and how it does it and how it respects privacy. We're, you know, we're not going to show pictures of people's homes. It's, it's literally a blurred color map.
And to give the inspection content some scale, right now, we can essentially inspect about 10 properties a day per inspector, and that is on, with adequate weather and that, and that's, you know, on a good day. This technology can inspect up to 100 parcels in, from what I was told, in about two hours and upload the data within 24 hours. We could essentially, if we really wanted to have full compliance or actually full, our inspection rate complete within three to four weeks. And this thing also, the technology that they were showing us also can look at chlorophyll levels that we can't see with the naked eye. So we can actually tell if this plant species is dead, dying, or, you know, not even in that category where, you know, the naked eye, we could look at something that may be dormant and assume that, you know, this is actually a dead plant, but it's not, or vice versa. So it's, it's really a cutting-edge technology and really exciting to be a part of. But no, I'm very understanding and I'm very empathetic to the concerns of the community, which is why I wanted to- which is why I wanted to partner with our community and city staff, and city council, and the mayor, the spisa, to bring this technology to the city. I was introduced to this about two months ago at a fire prevention officers' meeting, and approached the vendor to see if we could, he could come out and give us a demonstration, and then it, it was really impressive. And I'm just very thankful that they took the time to come out here and, and do this. Right now, they're currently partnering with LA City Fire, and going through a, a test phase with them. And they're getting some dynamic results out of Griffith Park, as well as the, some other parts of the valley. Thank you.
Any other questions for either of the chiefs? All right. Sheriff's report. Hector?
Good evening, Mr. City Council. We had one burglary last month, one domestic violence incident, three petty thefts, one traffic collision, and one prowler incident on Reposado. That's all I have for you. There was one, excuse me, one, let me see if I can find it. Animal cruelty. Don't know the details on that, it happened on Fullerton. I'll look into that.
And also met with Deputy Beltran and Captain Nemory today to talk about our Fourth of July preparedness, so ensuring that we have adequate coverage. So we're going to have the possibility of two deputies, minimum of one, but possibility of two deputies in the city, plus the CSO.
And four reserves. We're working on four reserves.
And some reserves.
Yes, sir.
Given that Fourth of July this year falls on a Friday, coupled with some of the incidents we had last year of some, 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 I don't think they were residents, but some folks that did not cooperate with our fire department when they asked them to take certain actions or stop doing certain things, we want to make sure that we have sufficient.
Bless you.
That was a good one. Certain law enforcement presence here to make sure that we have compliance with our fireworks ordinance, and more importantly, the parking ordinances. We have a lot of cars that come up into the city to watch the fireworks, and unfortunately, they're parking in areas that are very high fire, and off-road parking in areas with high fire is a recipe for catastrophe. So we want to try to get our arms wrapped around that a little bit better this year. We'll have more information at the June council meeting.
Yes.
I am, you know, I know Fire Watch has folks that come out, so it's going to be a combination of the sheriff's department, Fire Watch, and the fire department this year, patrolling the city on the Fourth of July. If anyone is interested in participating and would like to become a member of Fire Watch, they can reach out to me, and I'd be happy to get them in contact with the Fire Watch leadership. Anything to add?
No.
All right. Mr. Robinson, let's move into the consent calendar.
Number eleven is the treasurer's report for the month of March twenty-five. Number twelve is the minutes for April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regular city council meeting. Item thirteen, minutes of April twenty-first, twenty-five, special city council meeting. Item fourteen is the Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee membership. It's recommended that the city council approve Resident John Dominguez as a new member of the Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee. And finally, the project updates and deadlines report, number fifteen is attached.
I'd like to pull item fourteen.
Fourteen?
Move to approve.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
And John's yes. And, and the reason why I pulled item fourteen was I couldn't let, I couldn't let this go without thanking John. So I, it, you know, John has, has, I mean, just really driven so many important issues in the city. When it comes to our evacuation route planning work, John has been the lone voice driving a lot of that work. He resurrected the Hacienda Road cleanup effort, and, and organizes those for us every, every year, or, sorry, every quarter. I saw recently that he was participating in the group that runs, and I'm forgetting the app's name right now. Hold on, I'll get it.
Genesis?
Both Genesis and, what is the? It's the Fire Alert, or Watch Duty. So he was meeting with the folks. If you don't have Watch Duty, it's a great app. It tells you anytime a fire breaks out anywhere in Southern California. I got an alert yesterday for fires that were burning that had started up in the valley, the valley area. So it's a really, it's a really good situational awareness tool if you don't have it. So John is really bringing a lot of great technology into the city for the emergency preparedness team. So anyway, I fully support him. I think this is his second round on EPC. I think he was there when I ran EPC, and had to leave for some personal reasons, but I'm really happy that he's back. So I, I'm sorry, I, I just could not let this go without saying thank you to John, so I'll take a motion for...
I was just going to make a comment. I was tempted to do the exact same thing. I figured I'd embarrass myself too much, but thank you for all the words you said about John, you're absolutely right. And you go to the EPC meetings, he, he's a, he participates quite as much as any of the, of the actual members, so I'm glad he's a member now, or will be if we vote correctly.
All right, can I get a motion to approve? I think I need a motion, right, to approve?
Okay, I'll, I'll move.
All right, second?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
A big yes, like on, what is that? The star thing where they wave their hands. America's Got Talent.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yes.
And John's also a big, big yes. Thank you, John Dominguez.
I'd like to thank all the members of the council for that support for a key volunteer, and I'm sure it's appreciated by all the volunteers that we have. Angie has prepared this report, and we're going to let her deliver it this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a resolution adopting fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six project list funded by Senate Bill One revenues. So we bring this to council every year. In order for us to receive revenue for SB one, we must provide a list, the project list, via resolution, which we're doing tonight. And the, after it's been approved, the city must submit the list to California Transportation Commission through a portal online. So the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six project list is based on the PMP, Pavement Management Plan Program, which was presented to city council back in June of twenty-twenty-three. Just so you know, this list may be amended. We could amend it during the design phase for the project based on the city's needs. The proposed action will authorize the city to receive an estimated one hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars in RMRA slash SB one funding for the eligible roadways during the upcoming fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It is recommended that the city council adopt Resolution twenty-two-five dash twelve to approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six project list in order for us to fund portion of this project. Any questions?
If I could add one additional comment to what Angie has shared, this, the city's road projects go on continuously. They're either being built, or they're being designed, or we're tracking down money. It goes on year-round. Right now, we have one project under construction. We have another project that is sixty percent design level, approaching ninety percent design level. This is for money for next year's project that we're already lining up, so that, so that the money is in hand, and we can go forward with a project next year. Love approval.
Second?
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
John's yes. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen is the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three street improvement project for Zone Four regarding the Greenview update, and our city engineer Gerald will make a presentation here.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So in regards to the project fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, street improvement project Zone Four, there was a question by, by council member Stephire, and he requested an explanation for why the paving limits stopped at the edge of the roadway. It wasn't quite all the way to the very complete edge of the roadway, but it was actually stopped a little bit short. And the reason why was, um, do you want to make a comment, Councilmember?
Let me, let me clarify, because it didn't make it through to the report.
Okay.
My, we went out and did an inspection of that, of that entire strip. And you've taken, there's one picture in here that shows that La Habra's water took and trenched and put in new asphalt on the edge, on the northern edge of, of Greenview. I live on Greenview. There's another hundred and thirty feet where nothing new was done. Nothing new. It wasn't grubbed, it wasn't staked. And when, by the time you take and shovel off the dirt that's there, they didn't go anywhere close to the existing edge of the previous asphalt installation. How that, how you folks missed that is utterly beyond me. This picture does not demonstrate what we saw that day. We walked the entire two hundred feet. So all I can tell you is, this is not a correct explanation. I don't accept it. I won't accept it. If we're hiring people and we're designing things to be done, and, and you and Public Works are making an ad hoc determination to not do what we've already approved, then I don't think that's acceptable. Period.
So you're, you're, I'm sorry, so you're saying that the, there was an additional portion outside of this trench area that you're concerned about?
It's two hundred and twenty feet
Okay.
on the northern side of Greenview Road, starting at five oh five, and going towards my home, which is at six seventy-five, that isn't done. The Water District did nothing there. There's a spot where the Water District did in fact do some work, but as Water Districts always do, they don't do a huge, long, fifty-foot, hundred-foot trench. They do a spot trench to fix a problem. Now, I haven't seen the work order that they did, but I walked this, I walked it again today. It's still the way I saw it when Steve Blagden and I went out there and looked at it. So we both looked at it, we both were shocked that we didn't even come close to doing, I mean, they left two and a half feet of roadway, two and a half feet of asphalt, for at least a hundred feet, undone. Plus, part of the prototype, part of your engineering for that requires them, when they're at a storm drain, they're to clear the storm drain, right? It's part of grubbing and clearing. It's right in, right in the specs. The storm drain was full of crap, drawn, full, absolutely full. As far as I'm concerned, as a resident on Greenview, the job wasn't anywhere close to being done the way we would expect it to be done based on the plans that you folks put out. I'm sure the Roads Committee will agree with that, because it's obvious. This answer is not an answer. So with, with respect to the chair, I would just, I would suggest that this be tabled for the next, the next...
I was just going to suggest that we table it, and maybe, Greg, you can meet with staff and show them specifically what your concern is. I know exactly what your concern is, because it's a, you see it throughout the city where you have slough that comes off the hillside and covers up the edge of the road, and really, that should be cleared when we do these paving projects to ensure that we...
Yeah, I don't think Greenview is particularly unique. It just happens to be the street I live on. And, and all we did was take a blade and shovel, shovel the dirt and draw a trap out of the way, and you could trace the, the old asphalt, which was in pretty good shape, frankly, the old asphalt, because it's sort of off the more main thoroughfare, but nobody attempted to do anything to it. Nothing. And that's just not what we're paying for. I mean, we're already way over budget on roads. We can't, we can't, we can't, if we're going to get our jobs done, we got to get it done. So my, my motion is to, to table to the, to the June meeting, ask, I'll meet with staff again myself, but ask that staff come back with a, a more complete report than this one here.
Okay. We will definitely meet with you on the field. I would like to clarify to, to the mayor and city council that regarding, let's say, you, you say that there's two and a half feet that was not paved. So we do not pay the contractor by a lump sum when we do paving projects. We do it by a square footage of amount that we actually grind two inches of the asphalt. So it's by square foot of grinded asphalt, and it's also by ton of asphalt. So if we did not pave that area, we did not pay for it. And if it's in good condition, there's no reason to really pave it. I mean, we can, but it's just money that's going to be spent, that doesn't need to be spent, since you mentioned it. We all know that we're way over budget, as or under budget as far as what we need to, but we don't pay for what's not done. So if it wasn't paved, we didn't pay for it.
Well, you could fool me. I mean, the, the specification said, I mean, there's specs, right? We go to a lot of money and we pay for specifications to be drawn. The specs have clear, unequivocal language in them.
Yeah.
So, so do we just sort of normally, as a, as an, as a, as a process, just say, well, gee, we don't need to do this, so we'll just, don't sell us any more asphalt, and we'll give you credit for the asphalt you don't put down?
No, there's, there's no credit. It's based on bid item, it's based on square foot of, that we grind, and also tonnage of asphalt.
So, so if we don't do two hundred, say we don't do a hundred feet, and it's two feet wide, right?
Mm-hmm. That's two hundred, yeah. It's a hundred feet, so it's two hundred, two hundred square feet we don't pay for.
That's two hundred feet of two inches of asphalt, that's a spec, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we don't pay for it.
How do we not pay for it?
Because we measure the quantities. We go out there, we measure square footage, we measure, we get, we get tickets for tonnage of asphalt.
Let's do this. Let's, let's table this.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll let you get with the, the engineer and with staff, and we'll bring this back in June if we need to. All right, so let's go ahead and move on then. Item, item eighteen, the easement that won't die.
The easement that will not die. So a number of months ago, the city vacated La Habra Road, the portion within Powder Canyon pursuant to certain conditions. Those conditions being finalization of the helihydrant easement, and finalization of an easement from the Habitat Authority stating that they will clear the brush around La Habra Road, and it will be used for emergency access. In the process of finalizing those agreements, and I sent those to the Habitat Authority a couple of weeks ago, I figured out that the legal description of what we vacated in the resolution, I had attached the twenty feet we were reserving, not the legal description of the road. So under the law, I could have just swapped the documents, because it was clear what the city council did, but I like having a clean record. So this is a resolution doing what we've already done, but with the correct legal descriptions of vacating... of vacating the road, but then reserving the twenty-foot emergency access easement. That's what that is. So, that's my report.
Did we get the other documents finalized?
They have not gotten back to me yet.
Have we poked them recently?
Uh, I have not in a week and a half, but I will do so tomorrow at seven-thirty a.m.
Okay, because I'd, I'd really like to get this done.
No, I know.
Because it's holding up another important.
Right.
Item we need to get the Habitat to work on, so.
Yep, understood.
Yeah.
But they have had them for a couple of weeks now, and so, okay.
Yeah.
This resolution, much like the last resolution though, will not be recorded and the vacation complete until all those agreements are executed pursuant to our prior agreements.
Right. Any questions? Motion?
Um, move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Norm?
I'll second.
Okay. Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
And John's yes. All right, item nineteen, is that Angie?
Yes.
Okay, great. We're bringing this item to you tonight to amend the two thousand twenty-four elec, uh, general election cost. On April twenty-fourth of this year, we received an email from Los Angeles County Register Recorder's Office regarding a correction to their invoice. So we previously received an invoice back in, I want to say it was, it was sometime at the end of last year. For candidate's statement, that's, we received an invoice, and then we paid for some other items. And we receive, I'm so sorry, we received, in April, we received a notice, an email. They, they screwed up. They coded the services incorrectly, and they didn't bill anyone. So they sent us an additional invoice for about fifteen thousand for the actual election services, which include the vote-by-mail process, signature verification, and et cetera. Unfortunately, during mid-year budget, I thought we had received the last invoice for the election, so we amended the budget to zero out that line item. So now, we would like to amend the budget to include that fifteen thousand dollars to pay for this invoice.
So I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. To date, we haven't paid anything for the November election, correct?
We've paid a partial. We've just paid for the candidate's statement. So we had originally paid seven hundred seventy-one dollars, which they billed us back in December.
Okay, and that's all we paid, is the seven seventy-one?
Correct. So we thought we were finished, and then we received an email dated April twenty, the end of, the end of April, saying we forgot to invoice the rest of the election services. So I would like to request to amend the twenty-four, twenty-five budget in order to increase the elections account, which is one-oh-one dash one-twenty, MGR sixty-nine thirty, by fifteen thousand eight hundred nine dollars with ten cents, in order for us to pay this final invoice the county sent us for election services.
Any questions?
So we paid seven seventy-one, and we, is this a different budget year?
No, we're in the same budget year. So what happened was, they only billed us for the candidate's statement. They didn't, they forgot to invoices for all of the election services, right? So when we did the mid-year budget review, we thought we were done.
I understand, I just, why don't we subtract the seven seventy-one from the fifteen eight oh nine?
Because it's a separate, it's an additional invoice. We, so they should have billed us the fifteen thousand plus the seven seventy-one.
I don't understand.
Maybe, maybe the, maybe the candidates that got elected should just pay for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this in line with what we paid for the last election they handled for us? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't remember.
Oh, all right, whatever.
I, I actually seem to recall Rafferty saying something that elections cost between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, that's what I had heard.
So, I mean, I guess this sounds about in line with that when you add this, you know, seven hundred.
When you pay it, it's a final payment, so.
I think I had budgeted.
I don't think that'll work with the county.
I think I had budgeted about thirty or forty-five thousand dollars, so, I mean, I'm glad it's way under that, but it would have been nice to just pay seven hundred seventy-one dollars.
Yeah, nice try.
Well, nice try, Angie. Nice try.
All right. Do you have a motion?
Move of approval of the request.
Okay. Second? Anyone?
Second.
Carol, thank you. Brian?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Norm?
I'm tempted, but I'll vote yes.
John's yes. All right, item twenty.
Yes, item twenty is the contract planning services item that was discussed previously a bit. Basically, our, our planning community development section is short-staffed, has been for some time, and we have developed and have maintained for a period of time a backlog of some items that we think could be whittled down if we had another person in there for a period of time to help us in that area. We just, as the council's aware, we just recently lost an employee to another city. He was doing well, and that hurts our ability to maintain with junior, junior staff. Okay? So we're going to see if we can get somebody that's experienced out there. We'll talk to some of the engineering and similar type companies, planning companies that provide this type of assistance, see what sort of arrangements we can make at reasonable cost, and then bring someone in, and Rafferty will work very closely with them to focus them on getting some things done that we would like to have checked off our list.
I did talk with Angie about this, and because we have the vacancies that are already funded, it shouldn't be a significant impact to the budget to do this consulting work, and hopefully can start resolving some of the more mundane backlog issues that are driving, I think, several residents, are making several residents unhappy with the services and the timelines they're getting on, in that planning area.
It's, you know, so this is a step in the right direction, and, and, and obviously, our intent is to fill the two slots that are already in budget for the planner and the assistant, the technician. That's a revenue issue, and, but we have the new, we've gone ahead on the new government website for soliciting employees. We have a process moving forward. I'm real comfortable with this, I'm of approval.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Norm?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, with one quick, quick question. Do we know which firm we're going to be contracting with?
Not at this time. We have used several over the years, and we have at least one firm we're using currently for particular services. So we'll talk to those folks and see what they can provide.
Okay. Anyway, I'm voted yes.
And John's yes. The other, the other item that I've asked the city to work on is the pile of prints that are out there asking people to come pick up their old prints, or we're going to get rid of them, because I'm worried that staff might get buried under an avalanche of blueprints in that hallway, so. All right. Alan, John's yes. I guess I need to make sure my votes are on. All right, item twenty-one.
Item number twenty-one is a carryover from the last meeting, is the La Habra Heights informational flyer. This was at the April fourteenth meeting. We're recommending the council review and discuss. There are a few changes that were made in the attached document. Towards the end, I believe, the second to the last paragraph, and.
Yes.
Norm has additional information if you have questions about this.
Okay, just to remind everybody, as I mentioned last meeting, the purpose of this proposed handout is to help prospective residents and buyers understand our community better before they buy property or decide to move here. I cited the example of a couple who a couple years, a few years ago moved here, then had a fit about the barking dogs of most of their neighbors. Multiple complaints to the city, to county animal control, et cetera, and it ended up in a lawsuit or two before they decided to sell and move. I also mentioned examples of new residents who were upset that one of their neighbors had horses. Such disputes can be costly to the city due to staff time and other expenses, as well as to the rest of the residents, and it doesn't do much for building, if you think of community And especially the rest, most residents move here and are moving here because they, primarily because they want to enjoy the very things the complaining new residents hated. It is, it is in the best interest of the city to encourage those who love our rural environment to move here, and to give a heads up to those who don't understand or value our rural environment, because some of the people who move here just misunderstand what the city is all about, and they're actually probably pretty decent people, but we, I'd like to help them understand And I made a point to use only the language in the handout that was extracted from our general plan and from other city documents. That's, in other words, language wording has already been approved and been in, in our documents for years. During the last meeting, Mayor Pissbisa suggested adding language about fire safety, which was an excellent idea. I've added language from our city's brush clearance guide, and I would appreciate any other suggestions or modifications. Thank you.
So are we looking for approval from the council, or is just a receive and file? What are we looking for?
Well, ultimately, I like approval. I just, if someone has additional suggestions or wants to think about some more, but I'm, I'd be okay if it was approved as written right now, would be fine with me.
I'm, I'm totally comfortable with doing this kind of a handout.
Yes.
I think it's got to be finalized into a, you know, a representative format, right?
Oh, yes.
But I'm happy with that. I'm glad you're adding this stuff about wildfires. I think it's a good thing to do. I suppose we keep it up at the counter and hand it out. Perhaps we give it to Jan and any other Realtor who's real active in the city, share with their people.
Jan and Ray, I think, are the two big Realtors up here, and then maybe even.
Yeah.
I mean, wouldn't we add the brochure that the Fire Department currently puts out to the residents, the, the mailer that goes out each year?
I think that only deals with the brush clearance stuff, Brian. I think what Norm's trying to accomplish here is, you know, when people, I mean, I think it'd be good to get it with the Realtors, so that the Realtors would have something that say, this is kind of the unique nature of our city, and help people understand it. I know there's a couple, I've read it again, and I think there's a couple other things, because, for example, when I moved into the city, shame on me, I didn't have, neither Realtor was a Realtor from the city when I bought my house thirty-some years ago, and didn't realize, didn't even realize the house was on septic. Shame on me.
Oops.
You found, you found out.
But, but I did find out, because when the house, when the, when the home inspector came out and looked at the home, there was no risers for the septic tank. They were buried under the driveway. We actually had to cut the driveway to get to the risers, and, you know, but, so putting things like, things like that in there that can help new buyers understand the city a little bit better, I think it's a great idea. I, I would just want to get it into a final format, I'd like to do a legal review, just make sure there's, that it looks right from a legal perspective, and.
Well, I, I don't want to take this on. I know Stephen's in the back, and a couple of years ago, he drafted a more comprehensive piece of literature, and I had drafted one, and we kind of didn't totally agree. He, he got the one that's handed out in El Paso, Texas, and the county of Riverside, and the brochures are more comprehensive. So I, I don't know who's going to do this, but I, I really think this is not a format. I think it, it needs to have.
It should be formatted, I mean, I think, I think it's, it's, it's a directional document, and I think we could, you know, work to get it formatted and make it, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I have the draft, Tila Millsap and I worked up, he has his, I mean, maybe this is something the Planning Commission could think about, or, I don't know who, who wants to take this on, but I don't think this is, this is a format that's that helpful to people.
Well.
For many of the reasons you folks have said.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize. My, my suggestions are twofold. One of the, we could have two documents. The one that you and Steve are working on, we could, that's more comprehensive. But it's my experience that the longer a document is, more, more pages it is, the less likely people will read it, read it very well. Right now, I'm trying, trying to give a basic heads up to people what kind of, what kind of city this is, and we're serious about our rural environment, and for those who love rural environment, want to move here for that reason, we want them here. Those who don't, quite frankly, I feel bad for those who move here out of, and don't really understand the city, who are actually ordinarily decent people who would not have caused the problems had they known.
Well, one of the things that were stressed by El Paso and Riverside were the needs for permits, and this, this doesn't address that, and I don't think this addresses the fire threat enough. I don't know if we want to stress that we want barnyard animals throughout the city after all the trouble we, I, I just think it needs some sort of, it needs a lot of work, so I don't know.
Is there, is there, Norm, is there a word, word version of this, or what version, how, what, what is this, is it in Word, or?
Oh, it's in Word someplace. I'll, I'll find it.
Yeah, if you want to, if you want to find, Carol, I don't mind, I can, I, I'm pretty good at pulling this stuff together.
Well, maybe we should.
If you want to send me your copy, and Stephen, you can send me your copy, and I'll look at it, and I'll be happy to try to meld something and, and, and send it out to folks to look at through.
All right.
Oh, sir, I, I, again, I, my primary intent, of course, I'd be happy if it approved tonight, but my primary intent is to get input.
Okay, let's, let's.
Yeah, so let's, let's do this, Stephen, I'll, I'll touch base with you and see what you've got, and we can, I, I'm, the concept of having something that kind of describes our unique city, I think is, I think fabulous, we need to do it. Let's, let's look at it from a bunch, you know, little, see if we can come up with something. I, I agree with you, Norm, we don't want something that's three or four pages. I think if we can get it down to one page.
Right.
Like a one-page glossy that we can hand to someone when they come in, or, and give to the real estate agents, that when they have prospective buyers, it's part of a package. I think that would be fabulous.
And the other thing I'd like to make is attractive to real estate agents as possible, so they could use this as a positive sales tool. I don't want it to, oh, by the way, we don't cotton your kind around here unless you look along with this type of stuff.
Well, but I think it is important. I mean, there, again, I would hope that, you know, people understand that they are moving into a wildland interface, there are certain, to me, there are a lot of really positive things about that, but they also should understand there are a couple issues that you need to know about, especially around brush clearance and, and fire risk.
And dark sky.
And dark sky.
I didn't mention that, a good point, but I appreciate your input, and absolutely look at both of them. I, again, you might consider also having two separate documents.
Yeah, I just, I get worried about the complexity then, that, but send me, send me, if you can, send me what you got, and I'll take a look at it, and I'll get with Ray and Carol, or with Ray, sorry, with, with Stephen and Carol.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, item twenty-two. Any public meetings? Anything that anyone's gone to that they want to talk about?
Yes, I attended the SCAG meeting last, what, about two weeks ago, on the, the thirtieth of May, and, thirtieth of April and the first of May. In essence, I wish I put it, probably the most important part of the meeting, the most valuable part of the meeting was interactions with, with other councilmen from other cities. We could talk about some of our mutual concerns, and I've continued. And I've continued to interact with a few of them, extending emails and so forth afterwards. And among our mutual concerns is the idea of, of local control and so forth. They had, not, not all rural, but some have other concerns that concern local control, that's one, one item. Probably one of the most valuable things besides the contact with the, with the council members was the interactions with, they had several exhibits put on by students, college students mostly, various aspects of, of a, of a community development and so forth. And one of the most interesting things, which sound probably not, was one person made a presentation about aspects of having a community garden I hadn't, hadn't, hadn't thought of before. Why do we need the community garden in La Habra Heights? Well, we have plenty of room for ourselves, each individual. One of the thoughts I had was that the people who live in the county island and also if we expand our, go along with, as, if, if re, reina housing is developed as required, we have a lot of people living in high-density housing who aren't able to connect very well with, with, with the rest of the community because they have different interests. So one of the things we have to think about long-term is how do we get, if we have, we're going to have to build this, allow this reina housing and if it is, if the reina high-density housing is built, we got to figure out ways to make those people feel included in our community. And perhaps down the road, thinking about having a community garden that they could participate in or maybe give them horseback riding lessons or something like that, help them feel more rural, even though they live in a rural, high-density community. So the, in a small community like La Habra Heights, we have to find ways to make people, people feel included. Anyway, just some of my thoughts and thank you for your time. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I called into HOSEC this month, or actually it was, was it this month? Or was it end of April? Well, between the last meeting and this meeting, I called into the HOSEC call. I think it was the end of April. Really hoping that we can get those meetings repurposed a little bit from what they originally were to really looking at managing the fire threat that the open space presents. It was an idea that the mayor of Woodyer presented to the, myself and the mayor of Woody, or La Habra when we were on our aerial tour of the open space. It seemed to get some traction. HOSEC normally meets once a year. They've agreed to have a second meeting around the June-July timeframe to really begin to thresh out what that would look like, you know, to drive some better consistency about how the open space is managed from a fire perspective. So we'll see, we'll see what type of legs it gets. But it's one of the things that I know the LA County Forester and the, the chief that we were with was really focused on is that LA County manages part of it, our fire department manages part of it, Orange County Fire Authority manages part of it. And that it's kind of a patchwork of fire management. And it could be much more advantageous to residents to have a more coordinated, open space fire management plan. And so HOSEC hopefully can become like a catalyst to drive that, that collaboration between the cities and developing a coordinated plan on how to manage the open space from a fire perspective. That was, I don't know, I don't know how successful we'll be. It seems like there wasn't a lot of, a lot of anxious people. I mean, people that were motivated on that call, but we'll see where it, where it goes. And that's all I have. All right. Any public comments for items not on the agenda? Any final comments from the folks that stuck around? No? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.